Y'all doing okay this morning? Yeah, great. Well, my name is Anthony Williams and I pastor Eastside Freehold Baptist Church in Maldrow, Oklahoma. I'm an alumnus of Randall University and currently serve on the Board of Trustees. And so it's my honor to be here with you today, to share with you during this chapel time, and to share a thought from God's Word. So if you have your Bible, open up with me to the Gospel of Mark. The Gospel of Mark, Chapter 2. Mark, Chapter 2, and we're gonna read a few verses there. You might find this to be a familiar passage, something that you have read, maybe studied on a little bit, heard a message or two about. Deals with the healing of a man who is a paralytic. Beginning in verse 1 of Mark, Chapter 2, it says, "And when he returned to Capernaum, after some days, it was reported that he was in a house. And many were gathered together, so that there were no room, not even at the door; and he was preaching the word to them. And they came bringing to him a paralytic, carried by four men. And when they could not get near him because of the crowd, they removed the roof above him; and when they had made an opening, they let down the bed of the paralytic, which he lay. And when Jesus saw their faith, he said to the paralytic, 'Son, your sins are forgiven.' Now, some of the scribes were sitting there, questioning in their hearts, why does this man speak like that? He is blaspheming. Who can forgive sins but God alone? And immediately, Jesus, perceiving in His Spirit that they thus questioned within themselves, said to them, 'Why do you question these things in your heart? Which is easier? For me to say to the paralytic, 'Your sins are forgiven,' or to say, 'Rise, take up your bed, and walk?' Now, listen to verse 10. "But that you may know, that the Son of Man has authority on earth to forgive sins," he said to the paralytic, "I say to you, rise, pick up your bed, and go home." And he rose, and immediately picked up his bed, and went out before them all, so that they were all amazed and glorified God, saying, 'We never saw anything like this.' Pray with me. Father, I thank you for the reading of your Word this morning. I thank you for the opportunity that we have to share together in this time, and I ask you that you would captivate our hearts and our minds, and that you would draw us in closer to you to hear what you have to say. That it would not be my words that are heard today, but Father, it would be the power of your Holy Spirit speaking into our hearts. Stir within us the truths that we will discover together today. Pray, Father God, that you'd hide me behind the cross, and let the words of my mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable to you. In Jesus' name I pray, amen. Well, we've got an interesting passage here in Mark, Chapter 2. If you didn't pick up on it, there was something a little strange, a little different that was taking place here in this particular passage. The question is brought up, how can Jesus do what He's doing? Who gives Him the authority to do that? Who gives Him the authority to do or carry out the action that He claims He can carry out? Turns out that sometimes we may not have the authority that we think we do. I've been married to my lovely wife for 28 years now. I've got two sons. My oldest is Logan. Some of you know Logan. He attended here. He's an alumnus here at Randall University as well, just graduated back in the spring. My youngest is Ashton, so they're 23 and 20 years old. A few years back, I was going to store some things that I had, some belongings of mine, and I liked to consider myself to be king of my castle. You know what that means? Like, I don't have to ask permission to do stuff. If I want to do it, I do it. So I'm looking to store some things, and I open up some cabinet doors, and where I'm wanting to put some things of mine, there's a whole bunch of papers that are stacked there in this cabinet. And so I pull these papers out, and I toss them in the trash, because I thought, they're just papers. Nothing important, nothing to see here. Turns out, they weren't just papers. Turns out that my wife had held on to these papers of my kids from the time they were in preschool through elementary, and these happened to be their little elementary projects, you know, like the little hand-printed turkeys that you make in school, and you know, the first letters that you draw the alphabet, and all that kind of stuff that I guess moms kind of like to hold on to. Well, you know, I tossed all that stuff away. Laura finds out about it, that's my wife, she finds out about it, and come to find out, I did not have the authority to do what I thought I had the authority to do. There were some intense moments of fellowship over that. We had words. She used her words. I didn't get to use very many of mine. Matter of fact, I didn't get to use any of mine. But I found out that there were certain things that I didn't have the authority to do, and one of those things was, I can't go cleaning house without checking with my wife first. Even the king has some limitations, I guess. That's what we're running up against here in Mark, Chapter 2, mind you. Jesus appears to be doing something that people don't think that He has the authority to do. They're questioning whether or not He can do what He says He can do. So we're gonna examine that together this morning. One of the things that we have to understand is that Mark presents his gospel as Jesus as the suffering Messiah. And in Mark, Chapter 1, verse 1, Mark makes no bones about it. He lets everybody know that he is presenting the gospel of Jesus Christ. So he's telling his audience, first and foremost, that Jesus is the Christ. You understand that Christ is not Jesus' last name? That it is a messianic term. It means the Anointed One. So He is Messiah. And so Mark is saying, I'm gonna tell you the gospel of Jesus Christ, so he is making no bones about it, that he is presenting the gospel account, the story, if you will, of Jesus, how He is the Messiah, how He has come, He is the Anointed One, and he begins to share this gospel account. And as we journey through the Gospel of Mark, we run into all sorts of things that make us stand back and say, wow, look at this. Mark presents his gospel of Jesus as the suffering Messiah, the suffering servant. And Mark is writing to a predominantly Roman audience, which would understand that Mark highlighting how Jesus Christ holds authority and power, they would understand how the servant carries the authority and the power of the one who sent him. So this is all resonating within their mind. Here's the thing that we're gonna understand, that others may teach, but Jesus teaches with authority. Others may perform miracles, but Jesus commands unclean spirits like no one's ever seen. Others may preach repentance, but Jesus forgives sins. Who else can do that? This is what we'll observe in our text this morning. The first thing I want you to ask yourself is, what did Jesus profess Himself to be? What was Jesus professing Himself to be? Well, the answer to that is, the one who forgives sins, and we're gonna broaden on that a little bit here later on. But we first of all must understand that Jesus professes not only to be the one who forgives sins, but His fame has spread throughout all of Galilee. Notice back with me, or excuse me, in Mark, Chapter 1, or Mark, Chapter 2, verse 1. "And when he returned to Capernaum, after some days, it was reported that he was at a home." Jesus Christ has come back to the epicenter of where He started His earthly ministry, and as He comes back to this place, everybody's like, hey, Jesus is back in town. We're gonna go back over and we're gonna hear Him, because they have had some awesome experiences with Christ. They've experienced some phenomenal things. Matter of fact, if you look in Mark, Chapter 1, verse 28, and I have this on the board for you, but in Mark, Chapter 1, verse 28, and it says, "And at once His fame spread everywhere throughout all the surrounding region of Galilee." We can also observe in Mark, Chapter 1, verse 22, "And they were astonished at His teaching, for He taught them as one who had authority, not as the scribes." So Jesus is already setting Himself apart from anybody else that they've ever run into. These people have experienced other preachers and teachers. They have experienced other religious rabbis, but they have not experienced anyone like Jesus Christ. To hear Him teach, He taught with an authority that they were unfamiliar with. He taught them like nobody else. It wasn't just that. Look in Mark, Chapter 1, verse 27. In Mark, Chapter 1, verse 27, it says, "And they were all amazed, so they questioned among themselves, saying, 'What is this? A new teaching with authority? He commands even unclean spirits, and they obey Him.'" So not only was He teaching like nobody else, but when He commanded unclean spirits, that He drove them out like nobody else. And then there was something else about His ministry that was phenomenal. Look at Mark, Chapter 1, verse 34. "And He healed many who were sick with various diseases, and cast out many demons; and He would not permit the demons to speak, because they knew Him. So He heals like nobody else, casts out demons like nobody else, teaches like nobody else. This Jesus is not like anybody they've ever run into before. Who is this Jesus, and who is He professing to be? What are they finding out about Him? Then we run into this interesting little episode here in Mark, Chapter 2. Something a little different takes place here. The people that have gathered there that day, if you noticed in Mark, Chapter 2, and you read there, excuse me, and you read there in the first couple of verses, they had gathered in the house, and Jesus was teaching. Jesus had drawn a crowd. And they weren't there because they had to check in to check the box that they had attended chapel that day, so they'd get credit for it. No. They were there because they had heard about this Jesus who could heal all manners of diseases, because He taught like nobody else, and because He could drive out unclean spirits, and they were intrigued by Him. They wanted to know more about Jesus, so they was there. And there was such a crowd there that nobody else could get inside the room. It was a packed house. All the things that He had done on the shores of Galilee, where His earthly ministry had started, His fame had spread throughout, and now He comes back to this home to speak, to teach, but to have a divine appointment. Who is Jesus professing Himself to be? Well, apparently, He's professing Himself to be the one who forgives sins. That brings me to my second question that I want you to ask yourself this morning. Can He do what He claims He can do? Can He do what He claims He can do? Look at Mark, Chapter 2, verses 3 through 5 with me again. "And they came bringing to him a paralytic, carried by four men; and when they could not get near him because of the crowd, they removed the roof above him; and when they had made an opening, they let down the bed on which the paralytic lay. And when Jesus saw their faith, he said to the paralytic, 'Son, your sins are forgiven.'" Now, there's a lot to unpack here. There's a lot of things that you could preach a number of different sermons on this particular passage. I'm choosing to hone in on one particular aspect of it, but there's something that we have to address here this morning. First of all, we have to address these four friends, this paralytic and his four friends. Understand this. Let me tell you four things, or three things, excuse me, three things about these four friends. Number one, they were compassionate friends. You need some compassionate friends in your life. You need some people who share your sorrows and your struggles. You need some people that will champion you, that will come alongside of you and encourage you. And this paralytic had some friends that cared enough about him that they were concerned about his condition, and they were willing to do something about it. Number two, they were committed to the cause. They went and they got this man to bring him to Jesus. They were gonna bring this man to Jesus. When they got to the house, the house was so packed, so flooded, that they could not get into the house, and so what did they do? They didn't turn to the old boy and say, well, I'm sorry, man, we tried, and we'll have to come back another day. No, that wasn't the type of friends they were. You may have some people like that in your life, that they'll stick with you through thick and thin, until it really gets thick, and then they're gone. These men, these friends, they wouldn't give up. They were not easily deterred. They were committed to the cause. They were gonna continue to make sure that they were gonna get their friend before Jesus Christ. Where there's a will, there's a... That's right, a way. And they were gonna find a way. But also, these men were not only compassionate and committed, they were also very convinced. They were completely convinced that all they had to do was get their friend to Jesus, and if they could get their friend to Jesus, then Jesus would make all the difference in their friend's life. They were so convinced. That's called faith. And when Jesus saw their faith, that's a collective faith, the faith of these four friends, and I believe it's also indicative of the faith that this man had, and the paralytic had himself. When Jesus saw their faith, He turned to the paralytic, and He said, "Son, your sins are forgiven." That is a very strange way for Jesus to respond to what these people were doing. What do you think they had brought the man to Jesus for? Not for the forgiveness of sins. They had brought the man to Jesus because they wanted Jesus to make him walk again, to restore His faculties, to restore His functions. They brought the man to Jesus so that this man could be restored to health. Having his sins forgiven was nowhere on the map, because as far as they were concerned, and as much as they knew, Jesus couldn't do that. I mean, let's face it. Living in that world, in that time, the only way you had your sins forgiven, and they weren't really forgiven, was you come on the day of Atonement, you made your sacrifice, the priests went in, made sacrifice for you, and your sins would roll forward to the next year, and then you had to come do it again. Always had to keep offering up these sacrifices, paying your penance, so to speak. But Jesus said to the paralytic, "Your sins are forgiven you." Jesus was not making a statement. He wasn't just making a statement when He said to the paralytic that his sins were forgiven. He was acting upon the faith that those that had brought Him, and the paralytic himself, had in Jesus. I want you to understand something unequivocally. Faith in Jesus Christ makes all the difference. We are justified by faith. We are kept by the power of God by faith. The old saying burst from John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that He gave His only begotten Son, that whosoever would believe in Him should not perish but have everlasting life." Can Jesus really make the difference? Can Jesus do what He claims He can do? I want to first of all tell you that I believe absolutely He can, and He does. I would not be a preacher of the gospel of Jesus Christ if I did not believe that the gospel of Jesus Christ makes all the difference in people's lives. Let me tell you a quick story about a man by the name of Kenneth. I was called one day by one of my church members. He called me up, and he said, "Brother Anthony," he said, "I've got a neighbor who's in the hospital in a bad way," and he said, "I'd like for you to go talk with him. His name is Kenneth." And I said, "Sure, I can do that, Brother Everett. I'd be happy to go over and speak with Kenneth. He's in the hospital, you say?" "Yes." He gave me the room number, and I said, "Okay, I'll put that on my list. When I make my hospital rounds, I'll go by and I'll see Kenneth, and I'll visit with him." He said, "Yeah." He said, "He really needs a relationship with the Lord. By the way, Brother Anthony, listen, he's a pretty hard man. He's not religious at all. Matter of fact, I think he's kind of an atheist." And I thought, hmm, okay, well, thank you. I'll go by and I'll talk with Kenneth. So I went by, and I talked with Kenneth. I actually paid a number of visits with Kenneth. I'm gonna cut the story down, not gonna bore you with all the details, but after a long series of meetings with Kenneth, and me talking to him about the relationship that he needed with Jesus Christ, finally, one day, I walked in, and I said, "Kenneth," I said, "Listen, before I leave today, I need to talk to you about your relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ." And he looked at me, and he said, "Oh, preacher, listen, we're good." I said, "You're good?" He said, "Yes." He said, "I prayed to receive Jesus as my Savior." He said, "I've made it right with the Lord." He said, "I've got such a peace in my life." He said, "Thank you. Thank you for sharing Christ with me." And to be honest, I left that hospital thinking, well, praise God, Kenneth made things right, but also thinking, is he just telling me that to get me off his back? It was just a couple of days later that I received a phone call from his daughter. His daughter calls me up. I don't know her. I've never met her before a day in my life. She calls me up, and she says, "Are you Anthony Williams?" I said, "Yes, yes, I am." She said, "Are you the pastor that's been going by and talking to my dad, Kenneth?" I said, "Well, yes, yes, I am." She said, "I want to tell you something." I thought, oh, boy, here we go. She said, "For years, my dad and I have been estranged from one another. We have not had a relationship." She said, "My dad has been such a hard individual. He's been so against God, so bitter at God. I could not talk to him about church, about religion, couldn't talk to him about getting a relationship with Jesus Christ. Every time I'd bring it up, he would shut me down." She said, "I haven't talked to my dad in years." She said, "He called me the other day." She said that he told me, she said, Kenneth told me, said that he had made things right with the Lord, and that he knew that he needed to make things right with her, and their relationship was restored. Do I believe that Jesus Christ makes all the difference in the world? Absolutely, I do. Wasn't long after that that Kenneth passed away. He went on to be with the Lord. But his daughter has the hope, even today, that she's gonna see her dad again, because of his faith in Jesus Christ, because Jesus came to save people like Kenneth, hardened, sinful men. Because Jesus can forgive sins. And we go back to our passage. Can He do what He says He can do? Mark, Chapter 2, verse 10, says, "But that you may know that the Son of Man has authority on earth to forgive sins." His claim is, He can forgive sins. He says, "That you may know that the Son of Man has authority on earth to forgive sins." He said to the paralytic, "Yes, He can do what He claims to do." Listen to these verses. Mark, Chapter 2, verse 11 through 12. "I say to you, rise up, take up your bed, and go home. And he rose, and immediately picked up his bed, and went out before them, so that all of them were amazed and glorified God, saying, 'We never saw anything like this.'" In other words, what Jesus is saying is, He says, "If this man gets up and carries his bed home, then I have the authority to forgive sin." And so He says to the man, He says, "Get up and take your bed home." And the man got up. The man was healed that day, but the miracle, that was not the miracle. You'd say, well, God performed a miracle that day. Jesus performed a miracle that day. He restored a man who was a paralytic back to having the ability to walk. That was not the miracle. That was a mundane event in the life of Jesus Christ. He healed all manner of diseases, cast out all sorts of unclean spirits, taught like nobody else taught. This wasn't a miracle, not with Jesus. You might say that it's a miracle if you pass your test. You might say it's a miracle if you find the dream job, or if you find a life partner, or something other like that. You may say it's a miracle if you make it out of school. I don't know. You may say it's a miracle if you get good news at the doctor's office visit, or whatever it may be. And in your mind, that may be a miracle, but let me tell you something. The miracle that day was not that a lame man or a paralytic got up and walked. The miracle that day was that a man had his sins forgiven. Don't you understand? Don't you get it? There is nothing we can do about our sin? There is nothing we can fix about our sin? That even an earthly priest can't even remove our sin, as in the Old Testament economy proved? That the only one who can forgive sin is God Himself, that He says in Isaiah, "I am He who blots out your sin," that He takes them and casts them as far as the east is from the west, that He is still the God that forgives us and makes us whole spiritually? Don't you see, that's the miracle? That we're trapped in sin with no way out, but Jesus Christ says, "Your sins are forgiven." He alone has the power on earth to forgive sin. People, when Jesus said that, people was like, He can't do that. Who is He? Who does He think He is? He can't do it. Nobody can forgive sins but God. But He did, because He is God with us, and because He would pay the ultimate sacrifice for sin, because He would be the perfect sacrifice. Go and read Hebrews, the whole book of Hebrews, and it'll enlighten you on how He has fulfilled the Old Testament law, and how He is the perfect sacrifice. He is the superior Word or revelation, the superior priest, the superior sacrifice, the superior covenant. Everything about Hebrews is how Jesus Christ is the superior fulfillment, that He can forgive sin. Paul put it this way to Timothy in 1 Timothy, Chapter 1, verse 15. This saying is trustworthy and deserving of full acceptance, that Christ Jesus came into the world to save sinners, of whom I am foremost. Paul says, "I've been the worst of them all, but He saved me." Jesus Christ didn't come just to heal disease, or teach like nobody else, or drive out demonic spirits. Jesus Christ came to lay down His life on the cross at Calvary, to take your place in death, so that you could pass from death to life through Him, and find, once and for all, forgiveness for your sin, because there's nothing you can do about it. You can't earn your way to heaven. You can't do enough good deeds to make up for all the bad you've done. Had a guy tell me one time, he said, "Pastor," he said, "I'm just trying to live my life better than I started, and I feel like that if I just do enough good deeds, I can balance out all the bad I've done." It doesn't work like that. No. If you want your sins forgiven, that has to come from Jesus Christ. And how does it happen? Through faith. When Jesus saw their faith, He said, "Son, take up your bed and go home. Your sins are forgiven." He can do that for you. Would you bow your head with me? Jesus still holds the power and the authority to forgive, to remove our sin. Some people might say, well, you know, Brother Anthony, I'm not that bad of a person. I know some people far worse. You see, that's not how that works either. For all have sinned and fall short of the glory of God. Some people think, well, they just messed up so bad that they can never be right with God, and that's not how that works either. He is the God who removes our sin. The Scripture says in 1 John 1:9, "That if we confess our sin, He is faithful and just to forgive us of our sin, and to cleanse us from all unrighteousness." Maybe there would be some in the room here today that would say, you know what? I know there is something between me and God. I know that I've never come to a place in my life where I've asked Him to forgive me my sins and to set the record straight with Him. I've wondered, could Jesus really make all the difference? And the answer to that is, yes, He can. And if that's you today, then I want you to understand, in this auditorium, in this room right now, He is just a whisper away. All that you have to do is call upon His name. All you have to do is confess your sin to Him, and He will cleanse you from all unrighteousness, because He can do that. He can wipe the slate clean. Father, I thank you for the opportunity that we've had to be here in your presence this morning. I thank you, Father, for how your Word reminds us that you can do everything. There's nothing impossible with you. And I thank you, Father, today, that you have brought us to this place to remind us that you indeed are the one who removes our sin, sets the record straight, and you do that through your Son, Jesus Christ. Thank you today that you're still performing those miracles, bringing salvation to the hearts that will seek it. And we give you praise for these things. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. Thank you for your attention this morning.
Just a reminder, I want you to sign in. If you didn't stand in the beacon, make sure you sign in at the front. Also, just want to remind you, next week, you know, be watching. Our soccer teams and our volleyball team will both be at, or all three be at Nationals. So we're very excited for you guys, and hopeful that you will come home with wins in your respective fields. So be sure to watch the So be sure to watch the live streams for those. And then also, I want you to know, next week, for those of you that are here, we're gonna have a missions conference. So I want you to be ready for that. We'll have a lot of people on campus that will be able to talk with you about missions, and we'll have chapel about that as well, and a big Wednesday night service. So be ready for that. All right. Beloved of God.